A call meeting to order. And I would invite you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in this home of liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now we are over to public audience. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Um, this sounds familiar.
Hello. I'm Lori Boyko. I live at 15 O'Kerst Road in Simsbury. And this is my first time at Squadron Line School, so this is kind of cool. Uh, it's very nice, by the way. I like the whole. In his 1961 farewell address to the nation, President Dwight Eisenhower was almost prescient in his advice for our future. It's about 15 minutes long, and I highly recommend everyone to take the time to watch it. Regardless of your political affiliation, you will be astounded. There were so many lessons in his shared wisdom relevant specifically to today. One small section of his entire address states, crises there will continue to be. In meeting them, whether foreign or domestic, great or small, there is a recurring temptation to feel that some spectacular and costly action could become the miraculous solution to all current difficulties. He points out that there is a broader consideration that requires balance. And he goes on to give a number of examples of balance between clearly necessary and comfortably desirable, between essential requirements as a nation and duties imposed upon the individual, between action of the moment and national welfare of the future. And I'm going to go a little off script and say that that resonated with me because it struck a chord with something that I learned as opportunity costs. And many of you are probably familiar with those, but in a nutshell, it's a trade-off. If you have a snow day now, you gotta go to school for an extra day in June. If you have a half hour a day of social and emotional learning, you lose a half an hour of math or English instruction. And as my topic of the year is, when we insist on students wearing masks, we lose things. Now, to be sure, there are people in this room that believe that the masks are helping contain the spread. I have found that the research that I've done, the medical studies that I've read, and my own doctors that I've spoken to say that these masks don't do 10% worth of good. And 95s are a different story, but that's another discussion. These masks are not doing anything, yet they are causing anxiety. They are causing learning and emotional delays. They are causing children to feel like they have to wear a mask at all times in their lives, and it's been going on for two years. I understand that there's a state mask mandate for the schools. New York State Supreme Court just said that their opinion is that the mask mandates are not constitutional, which is the founding document of our country. So once again, I will sit and preach to the choir that I think the children need to be allowed to remove their masks. If others want to wear masks, I think that's fine. But on so many levels, we're trading off tomorrow for the safety blanket of today. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
All right. We are now on to committee reports. Alex, you're starting, please.
So, starting with the high school, winter sports are in full swing and most teams are doing very well. The Winter Musical Pippin opens this Friday, the 28th, and will be playing throughout the weekend and next weekend as well. Midterm exams are completed yesterday due to the snow day on Thursday. And so that officially marks the start of the second semester. Central and Latimer will both be holding spirit days this Friday, blue and gold themed and beach themed respectively. Central has also announced that school skate day has returned officially for the first time since COVID started. So signups have begun for that event on February 6th. At Tootin', last week, they held their second all-a-board assembly of the year online, celebrating students who earned conductor tickets and made it to the row of 10. Also, staff members who received monthly shadows were recognized. The main focus of that assembly was on being responsible students and using the what-if strategy to help students think carefully about decision-making. At Terrifil, the first band concert during COVID is planned for tomorrow, the 26th, and will be open to parents only to meet social distancing guidelines. And then for the middle school, counselors and administrators from HJMS will be visiting all sixth grade classes around the elementary schools to start the conversation about course registration, music class choice, and language class choice for 7th grade. And then for Squadron Line, Ms. Evans is here today, so I'll let her elaborate on highlights.
Sharon?
Nothing, thank you.
Nope, other than it's good to be back in squadron.
Hello?
Hi, sorry. I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Well, stuff for tonight.
You'll hear plenty from me later.
Just one thing, you may have seen in the news that our SAT assessment is going digital. So, yes, very exciting news. It does shorten up the assessment a bit from what we're being told from three hours to a mere two. But our team will be participating in some training on February 8th. Certainly, there's a lot of details that we have to learn about, and I will report back to the board. But since you may be hearing about it in the news, I thought I would highlight it here this evening.
Great, just a couple of things. I handed out at the beginning of the meeting budget binders for each board member. These will come in a little more handy when we get to the workshop, but they do have very useful information in them. They have past presentations about enrollment, staffing, and as we build the blocks to the budget this year, all those presentations will be given to you and placed in the book. There is, this is in honor of Mike Goman, former board member for many years, right? The historical data sheet, it's several sheets long. It's at the end of the binder, goes back, you know, to, how far do we go back here? Beginning of 2000s, enrollment, per pupil expenditure, total budget expenditures, the budget increase that the board started at, where we ended up at. You can really find some good trends and generate some good questions from this information. So when things aren't hopping too much in your downtime, it's a good sheet to check out. And we can certainly respond to any questions that you do have there. The other piece is I think everybody is encouraged by the recent trends we're seeing, you know, with the COVID data. We've been through this before, but we're seeing a rapid decline statewide, locally in Farmington Valley, and in our district with case numbers. So that is a positive. We'll continue to monitor that. You know, Lori mentioned in her opening comments, masks. The executive powers of the governor are set to expire mid-February. So there's a lot of conversation right now relative to what happens next. He's requested, I believe, that they look at 11 items and codify those or pull those into short-term law. But that's dialogue we'll have to monitor and then certainly have conversation with at this level in terms of any policies become local, as they did with the town side when the mask mandate became local. And you need to, you know, look at what data you're going to utilize to make decisions relative to some of these policies moving forward. Other than that, we're in good shape. I'm looking forward to being back at Squadron Line, where I was a principal years and years ago and hearing from the great administrative team. And then certainly we'll hear about the core of our budget tonight, which is our personnel presentation. We always say its personnel and benefits make up 80% of our number. So I think Neil's put together a really good stack tonight to go through for the board, and we'll answer any questions. Yeah? All right.
I would also like to add my happiness of being back at Squadron Line. I'm a parent of four kids who went through here for 14 years. It's nice to see the library. It looks really great. There have been some great changes. So thank you for hosting us. And you're going on to, like, I'm going to approve approval of the minutes of January 11th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? Although you can bear.
Aye.
That was easy. Now, on to the patient reports. Mrs. Evans? Mr. Oliver?
All right. Switch out some seats.
Well, we're excited to have you here, so welcome. As you know, our logo here at Squadron Line is that we all shine at Squadron Line. And we just wanted to showcase how we shine during a pandemic. I know that sometimes we hear a lot of the stressors that are in school, and we just wanted to be able to take a moment to highlight some of the great things that are happening. So it's not that we shine even during a pandemic, but we shine especially during the pandemic. And I just want to give a little shout-out to our teachers for just really going above and beyond, and our students for being available to learn and be so flexible, and our families that really have contributed to us to continue to shine in these unique circumstances. So every year, we base our school goals based on the vision of the graduate and the Board of Ed five-year goals. And this year, we really tried to streamline our goals here at Squadron Line just because of the pressures. I know at the beginning of the year, we were thinking we weren't going to have a lot of these mandates that are in place. And so just really being able to accommodate as we had to adjust. And so the two things that we really focus, are focusing on are getting back to the basics with our instruction and really monitoring student growth, as well as making sure that we're looking at our school culture and the social-emotional health of our students and our faculty.
So we put together significant events that have happened each month of the school year, and we wanted to showcase and share those with you all. So in September, we sang "Happy Birthday" to Squadron Line. I'm not sure if you all are aware, but Squadron turns 50 this year. So this is a compilation of our students singing. And every year, our students and staff decorate pumpkins in honor of their favorite storybook character, and the students are allowed to dress up as their favorite storybook character. So here are some of the pictures for each grade level.
We were also thrilled to be able to bring back a portion of our in-person Veterans Day celebration. So we did do a virtual celebration that we sent out with each grade level doing a song, and that's where you could see at the bottom. But we were also able to do a car parade. So the students lined up in the front of the school and around the sides, and veterans drove through the parking lot. And they were greeted by some fantastic chants. We were also super thrilled and overwhelmed by the continuous generosity of our community. Our town participated in the PJ for Kids across the district, and Squadron reached a school record of raising over $2,500, coming off of a school record of what we raised for our turkey trot. So it was really quite remarkable, the generosity of our school community.
So to promote a culture of literacy at our school, we've worked in conjunction with our language arts consultants and our staff members to have a book swap this year, and we have been fortunate to raise over 3,500 books. Students will be swapping books on Thursday and Friday. They put together a really nice program for the students and schedule for them to be able to go. And each student will be able to have three books that they're able to take home. Books that are remaining can go to classroom libraries, and anything that's remaining after that will go to local organizations.
Yeah.
I saw him in the hallway.
Yeah, like on your way out. If you take a look up the ramp, it's quite amazing.
It's impressive, yeah.
Again, the generosity of our community. And the kids are so excited. We were thinking we were going to need to have big prizes in order to have incentives to reach our targets, and they're just so excited to participate in it, that we were quite impressed with that internal intrinsic motivation. Which certainly leads us to the social-emotional learning. We have been taking time this year to engage in spending time teaching students strategies and just doing some really nice community building. But we thought, rather than hearing it from us, we would leave it over to the experts and let you hear the feedback from them. So we'll start off with some feedback from our faculty.
Hi, my name is Michelle Taviana. I teach in the garden. The SCL is so important because it helps students settle awareness, social awareness, and building a compassionate community. Some of the resources we use is the role mindset zones of regulation, and also Stanford and Pliny lessons. And it's a business of, you know, the great work that we're doing with young students because it also supports the vision of the graduate police. Really helping them become proud of all those critical thinkers that are making these decisions, really become more compassionate, brave citizens. So I really enjoy helping the students learn about their emotions and their thoughts, and also helping them problem solve and build up their toolbox, some strategies to help them get through some of those tougher challenging times in their lives, either at home or at school.
Good afternoon, my name is George Tivita. I'm a member of the fourth grade team at Squadron Line School. Behind me is the Yale mood meter that was established by their School for Social and Emotional Learning and Restaining. The mood meters are part of their lower program. Each morning, I use this mood meter to have students identify and express their emotional state, identify emotions that they're feeling, and why they're feeling those emotions. As an educator, this helps me to meet my students at their level, to access what is impacting them both socially and emotionally, and prepare them for a day of learning. You'll see that behind me, these four quadrants have emotional words and adjectives in them, and those students can identify where they're feeling based on their pleasantness and/or their energy level. Once they plot that, the goal is to get them into the green or blue levels, where they're able to be in a positive state or frame of mind to access the learning for the day. So it's a great way to take a temperature of my students' emotional well-being, and also to have them identify their emotions and see how those emotions impact their learning throughout the day. So you're here. Thank you.
When we set aside time for explicit instruction of social and emotional learning, I think we're providing the opportunity to build a strong connection with our students. When kids have that sense of belonging, there is a supportive environment, they thrive, and even take more risks, and I see them work harder. I've always had the philosophy that relationships will report what we do at school. I think they've worked hard to develop relationships with students and their families. That's what's bonded really important to model this work with those I work with in the building. Having this time set aside to explicitly do some of this work has not only strengthened my relationship with my students, but I've seen the relationships between my students be strengthened. It can be a bad problem in our book about how many girls, been as a girl's woman, been a poor one. The kid will immediately chime in, Julia, because Julia is already a swimmer. Or if they have to get the yellow instruction paper, personal project we're doing, and they see any yellow piece, the kid will jump in and there's someone will chime in and say, oh, when? Who wants that one? These are the little ways I narrow that what we're doing is important. A while back, this Karen, everybody will let her take me for a break with her son for the school year. And the last sentence she wrote was so powerful when I spoke to me. She said, "You can do them academically, you can do them emotionally, and you can do them socially." It was done that I knew that the work we do is really is valuable. So what I tell my parents, I encourage them to make. After all, these are the folks who are going to be taking care of us in a few years. Who are compassionate and pathetic, competent individuals doing the job, is very important.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Paul. I teach 6th grade here at Squadron Line School. Just wanted to offer my thoughts and reflections and just overall the importance of SCL this year at Squadron Line. Really, for the last two years. Just want to start off by saying that students are absolutely loving SCL. And the amount of time we spend together, enthusiastic, energetic, engaged during SCL. I always ask, who's drawn? Who's going to get to SCL? They won't have SCL. So I think that's something we need to celebrate as educators right from the start. The goals I had for this year around SCL was to build a classroom community and really to focus on relationships with my students and the relationships with their peers. You know, if you think about it, we had a lot of students coming in from out of districts, moving in, and then we had a lot of distance learners coming back to the classroom. Really creating and building that classroom community was a real point emphasis for me. One of the ways in which we did that, just switching over here to the next slide, is even packed up personal share. You know, it sounds so cliche-ish, and I'm hoping that classroom teachers are getting a chance to do this. But we've had a lot of success just having kids speak about what's going on in their personal lives. You learn a lot about a student, whether it's, you know, they're interested in dance, art, music, sports, their family lives. You know, and kids love talking about themselves and getting that out there. So, and kids can learn a lot from that, from each other. So that's been really successful for me, and I try to get to that every week. And I just want to say, you know, we use a lot of research-based programs which have been awesome. From Castle, Sanford-Hardley, and Responsive Classroom that are really talking to a lot of the role mindset traits we do teach at parent's school. Something that's kind of happened is there's been a lot of value in student choice. You know, during SCL, where the kids have taught me and showed, you know, myself as an educator, games that I can use in the classroom before, that really teach into, you know, for me in class, a lot of the mission of the graduate work that we can do with collaboration, communication, becoming a more global citizen, and some problems often. And games out here, the OG game, the Coos in class competitions, where kids are really working together, and they'll be trusting one another. So overall, SCL's been a huge success. I definitely see the value in the impact of SCL and look forward to continuing this for years to come. Thank you.
So now, we're going to hear from the real experts.
Okay, Julian, tell us all about.
One thing that we do during SCL is a photo game that is pretty unique to us. What we do, this means take out four friends to choose photo cards for us that always appear ourselves in a positive way.
So what are you?
I'm the friendly blackbird, which means raises the level of conversation as friends and working friends.
Hi, my name is Abby, and I'm 16 and I'm a little upset. I already showed you I'm a little bit of a black and a little bit of a hard person. Third quarter bit, and then really, and it's the one we do. So I'm like a big politician, one big politician.
I am Cassie, and I'm a green, and we use a chart to solve problems.
What do you do? Tell me about the example.
I'm, I'm a green, once that line, really, really important. Fighting out something, and everyone jumps in, and after he says, people are going to share, and that's all that's coming. Mine is going to try to be a green, and others come up with a purple. Every day, there's a new element, and then it happens. And I go, what is happening? It's there, it's getting more and more intense, and I'm like, that's. So, you know, or I discovered, that being a new happen, is my happiness. You know, you have to be happy.
That's so cute.
So, we never, I'm trying to remind you. And this book is all about, um, just that we've been in yourself, and that we both, we've been in this school. And one thing that really stuck out was, was reading the back of the book, and it took a little bit of time, and then I was like, I don't know. And we all, we're just like, we're in the same school, and first touch to success. We get so little.
Teacher there.
Oh, yeah.
I saw this in every room. I know it's the oldest term.
Hi, my name is Abby. One thing that was, and I know it's doing, it's not like we're making it. And then, I don't, um, and then, we were, and we are going to do this thing up there, and this is not long, where we, where it picks up and turn it up, and we look at them, and we, and we come in, and it's really hard.
Trying to make it. Um, I just wanted to ask you, what is, what is the strategy that you feel like you learned about this year? When we were talking about social, emotional learning?
I think I have a lot about to calm down when I get to the top of my.
What is the strategy you use when you need to calm down?
I mean, slow breathing.
Use a slow breathing, breathe. What do you mean? What do you have to use about Ava?
Be the pond.
What? Be the pond?
Um, it's like an activity, so when you're busting, and you're calming yourself down. So, lay down and close your eyes, imagine a pond, of all kinds of fish, with all kinds of different feelings. You're feeling like that, don't let that, just keep over.
It's priceless.
It's fun.
Well, I need to feel really, and that's.
It's for teaching us.
So you can see, that's why we didn't want to talk. We're like, we can't beat that. We can't beat that. So the work really does matter. But certainly, we don't do it alone.
So special thanks to our faculty, our students, our staff members. We definitely don't do it alone.
Right, and again, and I think our community, certainly, you know, we're so lucky to be in such a fabulous community, and certainly the support of the Board of Ed allows us to continue to do this work. We've often said it, and we'll say it a million times, nobody wants to be in a global pandemic. But if we had to be one, there's no better place to be in it, in Simsbury, with all the support that we have gotten from our town and certainly from the Squadron Line community. And because of that, we certainly all do shine here at Squadron Line. Thank you for letting us show off what we're doing. Thanks.
You are very impressive students, and I think that was really terrific.
Thank you, yes. Quite priceless. I'm gonna go be the pond. Try that with my 16-year-old. Be the pond.
Neil, I'll do that tomorrow. We could use a little of this at Central Office.
Need word level. Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now, we are on to our favorite, the 22-23 budget, and we'll make it stand. All right. Mr. Sullivan, I want to hear who's picking this off.
Yeah, I mean, this is, as I said before, this is really the backbone of where we go moving forward. I know you had an opportunity two weeks ago to hear from Katie Crisula, and she articulated some of the needs around student support and some of the staffing that we are thinking about. Those positions will be represented in this presentation by Neil tonight, as well as some historical background information and some overall context. And we'll kind of put it together for you and show you what roll-forwards look like in just basic costs and staffing, and what the new staffing cost would look like, and also some generalized ideas for how to offset the cost of the operating budget, all right, through grant funding. And that will certainly be a major topic of our conversation at the workshop and moving forward. We'll give you kind of some oversight into that tonight.
And just to note, board members, if you're going to be able to say anything in the presentation.
Presentation is in there.
There, you want notes on it?
The other piece I draw attention to is in the new initiatives tab in the book, is a detailed write-up of each one of these positions that Neil will discuss tonight. All right, Mr. Sullivan? All right.
Also want to express my gratitude to be back at Squadron Line after, uh, bringing two children through all seven years of schooling at Squadron Line. It was good to see, um, my now twenty-four-year-old son kindergarten teacher, still teaching kindergarten. She started very young, Michelle Fabiana, but, uh, really, um, a pleasure to be here. Congratulations to Megan Nishiria on that presentation. So, um, as, as we kick this off tonight, um, you're gonna see some familiar, uh, elements of the format, um, trying to look a little bit at the historical patterns of where we've been, and then, um, digging in at each level into what the new positions are. I consider this presentation tonight to really be building on the one that you saw two weeks ago, that when Katie Crisula presented about special education, you're gonna see a real focus, um, not only on the, uh, mental health needs that, um, Katie talked about, and devoting, um, you know, posit- new positions to, uh, address that, but also, uh, around special ed leadership, special ed instruction, um, and meeting our, um, enrollment needs as they shift. So, um, it, it really, I think you'll see a real through line from a couple of weeks ago. So as we look here, I'll give you a little bit of the historical, um, context, and, um, we, we pick these years, um, and I've done this in past presentations, because that two thousand eight, nine was sort of a peak of the last twenty years of where we were, enrollment-wise, and you'll see these dates keep coming back through, throughout the presentation. The two thousand twelve, thirteen year represented sort of halfway on the, um, downward side of the enrollment curve, and then about where we are now. So, I actually picked the two years around our distance learning year, and you can see that, um, the, what this shows us, as this board knows well, is that the enrollment trend, obviously, the downward trend first hit in the elementary level, and you can see that, a pretty precipitous drop early in the curve here at the elementary level, whereas now, we have experienced the drop in the secondary level over the last, uh, portion of the curve. So, um, that is reflected in staffing, um, and we, I could show you a little bit of a, a staffing look on the next slide. So here you can see, um, looking at those same sort of dates, where we were in terms of certified, non-certified, and administrative positions, and where that gets to a total. So, you can see that, uh, early on, the, the non-certified side actually got a pretty significant restructure. Uh, the board reinvested a lot of dollars in, um, at that time, um, building up full-day kindergarten, um, doing things, uh, with our reading intervention program that did not see a lot of gains on the certified side. But we have, um, continued to, um, uh, see a drop in certified, uh, staffing over the last few years. So, over the timeline here, you're down about eighteen and a half positions in certified. And while you're down twenty in non-certified, you're sort of up over the second part of the timeline. So, I, but it does still represent, if you go over to the staffing total, it's over forty-five positions from our right. And I, I know that as boards, other boards look at this, it's important for us to show that we are responsive to the enrollment trends, and, um, while it, it's not realistic to keep up completely with the pace of student decline, that we have, in fact, um, had a pretty significant, um, decline in the, the number of positions. So we'll start with the elementary school, um, you'll, elementary schools, you'll see, where, uh, I, I, this slide, I want to draw your attention to where we were in, uh, twenty twelve, thirteen, where we had two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight students projected for next year in the blue. You can see we are frighteningly close to that number, two thousand one hundred and seventy-four. And if it took a hundred and eight classroom teachers then, it's gonna take a hundred and seven classroom teachers now. So I think it's a really interesting look at, you know, we are response, when we can make a move, we do. Why was it so much higher, uh, or the ratio so different in two thousand eight, nine? You had twenty-five hundred students, but we only had half-day kindergarten. So, the true comparison is between twelve, thirteen, and twenty-two, twenty-three. In that decade, it's almost the same exact number of students, and it's gonna require almost the same exact number of teachers. One oh seven is a little tight, uh, you can go ahead, Sue, actually. So that, that first bullet, uh, says it's gonna allow for flat classroom staffing. We're at a hundred and seven now, but that was because we, um, added positions late in the summer last year. You'll remember, we added three at Central School over the course of the summer, we added two at Squadron Line, we added at Tooton Hills. So, we, we had projected budget-wise to be, um, around a hundred and three positions and ended up at a hundred and seven. That's actually gonna help us in not needing to add new positions this year, even though enrollment is gonna go up a little bit. We'll have to monitor, you know, right now, you take the projections and you, um, you know, divide the classes up appropriately for your class size guidelines, um, and it comes out, uh, true to a hundred and seven. Some of those will have to be closely monitored at Squadron, Latimer, and Tooten. But even over the last two weeks, we have seen, um, an interesting number in that it's the time of year where we pull together the, the first wave of how many kindergarteners, and the, uh, the big class that entered this year doesn't seem to be at that level as we look at an initial census. It's early, we still, we're gonna have to watch that number, but we're nowhere near the number of identified five-year-olds that we were at last year. So, um, uh, hopefully, we might be able to, um, while we've projected for three kindergartens in some of the schools, there might be a need for only two in some of the schools based on the early numbers that we're seeing, and we could, um, you know, possibly see some movement of staffing. So, we'll monitor that, the, the enrollments really begin for kindergarten in February, and it's right, right around April vacation that we sort of know where those kindergartens are, uh, are, um, likely to be. So in terms of what I wanted to emphasize with the board, it's sort of like, what was last year about when we did this budget process? And you'll recall in twenty-one, twenty-two, it was all about rebuilding our intervention systems, that during the year that we, um, had students in, um, beginning in remote learning and some were in-person learning, we accomplished that through a, um, reallocation of people like language arts coaches and, uh, language arts consultants, math coaches, um, reading interventionists. We, last year's budget process sort of rebuilt all of that and put that back into place. We also significantly, um, increased in last year's budget, the math tutors that were, uh, brought into the elementary schools. If that went into regular ed, uh, interventions in twenty-one, twenty-two, again, the theme is for twenty-two, twenty-three, that you're gonna see a significant focus on special education needs, both mental health and a little bit of leadership structure stuff that Katie Crisula talked about last year. So these are the positions that have come through the budgets for both, um, special ed through Katie Crisula, as well as a shared, um, portion of that with our elementary principals. And it begins with the two additional social workers, so that you would essentially create a dedicated social worker at each elementary school. We'll have to look at caseloads about that. Obviously, the elementary schools are of significantly different sizes, so you want to get some fair allocation there, but it more or less puts a social worker at home base in each school. And certainly, um, based on last, uh, two weeks ago presentation, you know, as Katie described, those emerging mental health issues that, um, our clinicians are seeing, that, um, that kind of, uh, support in, in the form of social workers is, uh, probably the top priority, um, in this budget. Katie referenced a little bit of what we're looking at in terms of, uh, the leadership structure at the elementary level in special education. It focuses right now on a supervisor who is spread across five buildings and a, um, and given the, uh, uh, higher, uh, more intense, maybe I'll say, needs that we have seen with many of our elementary special education students. This is a reimagining of, uh, leadership structures to kind of get, um, a, a step closer to the action, if you will, to get folks be, to become more building-based. So what it imagines is creating three department supervisors. We have, uh, so the same way we have a department supervisor at the high school, a department supervisor at the middle school, it imagines there being department supervisors for special ed, one here at Squadron, and then two more split between two other schools. And it just gets them, um, to a place where, um, you know, better working knowledge of those cases and families, the, the teachers working in those buildings. It will free up our school psychologists who are doing a lot of the P P T work in these buildings. And, yeah, I urge you to, um, Matt said that each of these positions is described in that tab on new initiatives. There's a very thoughtful description of everything you would gain. I do want to point out that to get there, it is a, so you see, I'm talking about three positions, but it says one F T E. And that's because we do, you know, Nancy Forsberg's position is one that we would utilize in this restructuring one. And in addition, um, our Janet Haley in our Ready Sit Go program, who has been a significant leader in special education, it is her retirement year, so we want to take a look at the structures that we already have, um, and do a thoughtful reinvention of that, um, that I think Katie did a really tremendous job thinking through. And if this is supported in the budget, I think it's really gonna, gonna make a significant, um, difference with the challenges we see. The, the third one is simply enrollment-driven. We have seen, uh, larger caseloads at Squadron and Latimer, so this would, um, hopefully just round out some positions that we have, half-time positions at each school. Our hope would be to round those out to full-time and make the caseloads at those two, our largest two elementary schools, uh, more manageable and more like the caseloads at the other schools. And then, lastly, we've seen, um, a significant, um, increase in caseloads for speech and language pathology, um, uh, significantly at the preschool level, uh, based here in this building, um, but in a number of the lower grades across the five schools. So, we are already, um, I'll talk about this more in a moment, but we all are already, um, utilizing some contracted services to meet some of those needs in speech and language pathology. So there's a thought that we, um, could, instead of putting the dollars into contracted services, you put the dollars into staff, and, um, so that's something that's gotta be examined further, but that's how we try to, uh, meet that budget need. So this is one that, um, is important in terms of how are we gonna be able to move forward these positions without having a massive impact on the operating budget? And this is to address, um, where we are for this year's operating budget, and trying to take some of the grant funding that we know is out there because of the pandemic, and use it strategically so that we can, um, meet the needs that we're seeing. And, um, I'll, I'll, uh, turn to Amy a little later in the presentation, so we have some initial ideas of how you do that to not create a cliff that's gonna cause a significant problem. So, uh, with the social workers, we heard at, um, the, um, three-board meeting that the town was open to the concept of, they got a significant amount of ARPA funding that they are able to utilize with some school positions. We heard some, uh, notion that that, they were open to that idea of helping our board with some of those dollars. This would take some more conversation, but we would imagine that, um, the, um, the placeholder for that number of dollars, this, this year's, um, placeholder, you can see the ninety-three thousand two hundred and eighty-two, so doubled for two social workers as the, that, that includes a mid-level sal- a middle-of-the-scale salary plus a benefits package. That's how we get to that dollar amount for budgeting purposes, okay? And that would be a place where we could have that discussion with the board to say that's, we believe that to be a completely appropriate use of that grant funding, would be to fund, um, the social workers. The department supervisor structure, again, it's one additional position, it's a little higher than the placeholder because it includes a leadership stipend, um, and, uh, we could use, uh, we believe, the ESER fund, I, I promised myself I wasn't gonna do all the acronyms. So, ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan Act, if, those dollars, and then ESER is the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund, okay? So, that, that was, um, and the ESER grants have come in a number of phases. So we, we used them last year, for instance, to do a whole lot of summer school work. So it, it, they're now turning into other ways to use the dollars. So, we, we believe we can fund the, um, shift in the leadership structure through that, uh, grant, and then the teacher through our, the board also gets ARPA funding. There's ARPA funding for the town and ARPA funding for the board, so I believe that that's where we could go. With the speech and language patho- pathologist position, at the secondary level, we're gonna talk about a psychologist. We use, um, the two places in contracted services where we do, um, uh, use, uh, the, those dollars are for speech and language pathology and for doing a number of evaluations, um, with some of our retired school psychologists who come in and kind of take the load off. So, our hope would be, if we fill these positions, we could take the money from contracted services so that it would not have an impact on increasing the, the, um, operating budget. So, that's what we have at the, um, elementary level, it's a number of new positions, um, but again, I, I, I think they're well-focused in terms of our needs.
Sure. Can I ask a question about that? I'm trying to think in my mind what it would look like, but is it possible to put together some sort of list by school building? And I know that there's a lot of shared services. How many people we have currently in these kind of positions today, and in what, what buildings, and then how, how that might look after this? I, I, I mean, Katie did a great job explaining the, the needs and, and, um, I'm, I'm on board with that.
Yeah.
I just lose track of what we're adding. How many do we have already? And where do they are?
Elementary level would be, we're going from three.
Correct.
To five. So we could put a chart together, we could have it at the, at the workshop for you on all these.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to waste anybody's time if it's not even like.
Easy to do, Todd.
Very easy.
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and some of them shift, Todd, year to year for, like, the speech and language pathologists, you might be assigned primarily to Tooten, and you have some cases at Central one year, but then the next year, the need shifted to Latimer.
Yeah.
So, like, it moves, um, based on where the intensity of the services are. The, the school psychologists are really sort of key players in their building. So each school has a, has a dedicated psychologist, um, and Squadron has two. So, we'll, but we'll put that all together for you.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
So, just one more question. There was a comment made about trying to get the caseloads to be. And so what's that magic number, or what are we trying to get?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to say, uh, because a number, one doesn't always equal one as far as intensity goes, right? So if I have, um, a caseload, let's say, this would be a magic number of ten, they're not that low, um, but I have students with very high service hours, that might be different from a caseload of fifteen with not as many service hours. But right now, we are well into the twenties, in some cases, high twenties, and based upon kind of our roll-up, um, that would even increase. So we're trying to kind of even out, uh, look at some of that intensity and to help spread that to make things more equitable.
I just had a question with Amy, I'm thinking, I, well, I, somebody I'm sure could tell me, the ARPA funding by the town, is that a vote by the Board of Selectmen to decide to let us use that money?
Yeah, so much more, much, yeah, much more conversation to come, and we, we realize that. I've talked a little bit, uh, certainly Amy about it, I, I talked a little bit to Maria about it, and know that they have working groups and there'll be a list of priorities, but we wanted to put out there if we can be part of that conversation. Based on what we heard early, um, we think we have a need here that could potentially be supported. So certainly, if that wasn't a possibility, that's the number one need, um, that's been listed by our staff, we would have to find a different way until it's funded. listed by our staff. We would have to find a different way to fund those.
Okay. Because I know they're talking about going slow, not to ignore you, Erica, but but you guys are going to be measuring how you use that money. So I just don't, are we looking at it for this year's budget cycle?
Yeah.
There's a very common reason to spend some initial support. Um, when we work first before, um, we don't have a final decision, but with that initial support, we are considering the college and cash for those dollars.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and we'll shift the focus to the secondary level, just to give you some enrollment information. You can see here that we have done, um, I think, very good work at both schools in controlling the certified FTE as the enrollment dropped, so that you can see um, when it was at its height, uh, at that identified year of two thousand eight, nine, sixty-eight and a quarter teachers, and it came all the way down to sixty, which is essentially almost like two teams worth of teachers. So um, responded appropriately. You can see the projections for next year in the blue. It goes down slightly to six twenty-two. Um, and yet the FTE that we're proposing is the addition of a half a position, and I'll get to to that in a moment. It's keeping the staffing and the departments flat. So same number of English teachers, math teachers, social studies, all of that, it would be flat for next year. But it's a change, you um, if you remember this from the previous years, because of that small sixth grade coming to seventh, we, over the last couple of years, each grade level was given two point eight teams worth of teachers. A and and there was a team that had to split across seventh and eighth grade. This this would take, um, seventh grade would have two point six teams and eighth grade would have three full teams. And you can see when you take that number, what you do um, with it is divide and then take the team size and divide it by five, because those kids, uh, a teacher teaches five classes over the course of the day, and that gives you where your class size is. So you can see this uh, change from two point eight teams in each grade to a two point six and three, gives you right in that sweet spot of class sizes around twenty-two, when your policy is twenty-one to twenty-five. So this is gonna be a good change um, for the middle school, at least for the next two years, because then what's likely to happen is it'll be two point six for eighth grade the year after that. It'll switch and you and you can uh, make that change. So um, the Simsbury High School staffing, you'll see um, the decrease from twelve, thirteen, a hundred and thirty-one teachers to where we are now, which is a hundred and fifteen teachers. That's a significant um, change. And I I will say, we have looked very hard at every retirement. Do we need to replace this position now? Um, and it has been, uh, I think, a a really good example for the other boards of where we are looking at things hard to find efficiencies. Um, and you know, have changed that FTE number um, pretty significantly based on the enrollment. The increase is um, one point five, and I'll get to that on the next slide of where you you'll see that. So um, at Henry James, what does this budget support? Uh, again, the class sizes should improve with that balancing of the teams. That's that business with three and two point six. Um, I I really wanted to point out for the board that maintaining the PE and health improvement that was put in place, um, we had talked about it in the budget process a few years ago, making the combined PE and health an everyday experience for seventh and eighth graders. We were sort of forced to put down that that in place in an emergency basis, um, in order to make COVID scheduling work. We sort of kept it in place this year, not knowing if we could. And now this budget continues to support that. So it's one that, you know, we got it in place on an emergency basis. We saw the benefit, and now we're we're with the way the staffing is working, we're proposing to keep it. And um, I think it was a really good, um, it it was something that was done for an emergency, but it supported a curriculum goal that had been in place. Um, and it also in a minor way, uh, it's not huge dollars, but I think Scott and Jacqueline uh, really want to get what, you know, when September of twenty twenty-two hits, they want that after-school life of Henry James to be fully back up and on board if we can. I mean, there are elements in place now, but you know, it's taken a while to get kind of the intramurals back to where they are and some of the clubs and academic support. So getting all of that, it it takes um, some stipends for teachers, but it it's, I know it's an important goal for their, for them. At Simsbury High School, the major position that we're talking about is capstone support. You know from a presentation we had earlier that um, the senior capstone is the major priority of Simsbury High School. The next academic year is the first year it's a requirement for the graduating seniors. We don't know exactly what this FTE would look like yet, because the kids are just signing up for their courses. So as the seniors choose what kind of senior year experience they are going to have for their capstone, we'll know whether we have to dedicate this FTE to perhaps supporting oversight of internships or teaching classes that would allow the um, students to meet their capstone requirement. And it might be spread across a few departments. So we need to wait for that kind of aroma. That's why I'm saying it's got to be a flexible approach to what we need. Um, and but we think it will, in it in addition to our capstone, um, I mean, what's her title, coordinator? Liz McKay, our capstone coordinator, who came and presented to you. That's a position that has gotten this up and running, but it's gonna take more FTE to commit to three hundred-plus seniors all getting this done um, as a as a curriculum requirement. Um, in order to fund that, we are proposing using a portion of the non-lapsing account so that it does not have um, an immediate impact on operating. The other uh, need coming out of, again, of Katie Crisula's presentation uh, last week is at the secondary level, looking at a school psychologist. I split that in terms of FTE, a half for Henry James and a half for Simsbury High School. I have no idea if that's how it will really play out, but for purpose of the presentation, it worked. Um, but this is really, um, we think uh, gonna be targeted toward, um, we we talked about the number of referrals that every referral comes with a heavy duty testing and evaluation process. And to be able to, you know, perhaps dedicate somebody to that, um, to free up other folks to do the clinical work, or, you know, it really would depend on on how we go about the hiring process for this. So um, and that is where um, we do believe the ESER grant could also support that. So you're gonna see that all told, there were um, five positions at uh, the elementary. This is two more. Because of that contracted services thing, when we talk about the impact, we're gonna, you'll see on a later slide that we talk about six positions, but there's really seven, and but and that's kind of the the change here. There are some minor issue um, with world language staffing. Um, particularly, we did a pilot program related to American Sign Language this year. We've been working with um, uh, uh, sequencing Chinese through a uh, online platform. This budget supposes um, getting away from that online platform and hiring some part-time FTE. Uh, we believe we can offset it, that it doesn't have a budget impact. Um, but the other thing that Mr. Petrino put in his presentation, it is the first year that the state mandated Black and Latino Studies course becomes a requirement, which would require um, a need probably for social studies teacher to teach that course, and you offset it by how you're looking at the course distribution for that particular department. So I put those up there just because they are things um, we need to think about as we go to schedule, but they don't really have a lot of budget impact. Um, so that's between elementary and secondary, but I wanted to talk about a few other things that came up in our meetings with principals. Um, and this one came out of my office, so I'll talk about it first. Um, we've done better than a lot of places with substitute teachers, but we've had our struggles too. I mean, and it is um, challenging in this environment to cover teachers. Um, so a couple of things that Cindy Frelinger and I have proposed that will have a budget impact that help with, uh, to help with this. Um, I I, you know, some districts, I would say it's a crisis. For us, it's a problem that needs to be addressed. There are other places that are shutting schools down for the day because they don't have enough teacher and substitute teachers. So one strategy is to use what we call building substitutes. Building substitutes are people who commit to coming every day to substitute teach, and you assign them to one particular elementary school, and then there's one at the middle school, one at the high school. Uh, at the elementary school, it works because they are the go-to person that the principal knows. That's the first teacher in. When I need a substitute in my building, they get to know the kids, they get to know their colleagues, they become trustworthy, and we pay them more than we do a normal substitute who comes in. So we, this year instituted those positions. We want to increase the number of those we have because they prove to be invaluable. And uh, again, we pay them at a higher daily rate. So there's a budget impact. We think the normal daily rate for substitutes, um, quite frankly, as state of Connecticut minimum wage hits fourteen dollars an hour on August first, twenty twenty-two, we need to increase what a substitute teacher would make to get enough of a gap between what a minimum wage job is and what substitute teaching is. So you see a wage increase of ten percent, you'll say, who does, w- w- we need to do that? Like, we need to make this um, attractive in terms of um, uh, you know, a a a working wage. Um, and it's only gonna, it's gonna continue because there's another year where the minimum wage goes up to fifteen dollars an hour in twenty twenty-three. So this is something that we really need to pay attention to. We also have dabbled, we started with this, ideas of incentive programs. You substitute more, we pay you more. Like, that that idea, and we have, uh, we put some in place over um, December to try to encourage, like, a lot of people like to substitute teach two or three days a week. When they, you beg them and really see the need or make it went their while, maybe they'll do a little more, and it's that that idea. Um, so that's an important priority for us, and it has a budget impact. A minor budget impact, but it's something our elementary principals in particular are looking for some some support on is additional days of secretarial support. Their lead secretaries already work through the summer, but it's asking for their second secretary in the office to have an assigned number of days to come in, sometimes for vacation coverage, but otherwise for special projects that that need extra hands. Um, certainly, one of the things we want to do is continue to look at any non-certified resignations and retirements, particularly in special education. I, Katie Crisula and I have talked about this. We recognize this is a big ask on the certified side of special education. So are there some savings we might find on the non-certified side? Is there an offset that we can find there naturally through any retirements or resignations that happen? Not putting a number on it, but it's a strategy that we know we need to um, be utilizing. Um, similar to the substitute paid uh, teacher issue, non-union paraeducators, these are general education um, monitors in the a lot of the elementary schools. Um, again, they're pushing up against minimum wage, and we need to increase their pay. I will say, outside of your operating budget, there are other employees associated with our district that push up against the minimum wage uh, issues. Uh, our food services director is gonna have to address cafeteria worker wages to make sure that they're staying above minimum wage. And um, our after-school care program, the SEED program, has also got some people who, you know, need to get a gap from minimum wage um, in order to attract employees into that work. Um, and then another area that I'm digging into uh, uh, pretty hard right now is the the overtime costs that we're experiencing, um, certainly during COVID with our custodians. Um, right now, we're experiencing pretty significant overtime costs for custodians, because you can't get any substitute custodians. So then somebody from the first shift still has to stay if someone's out for the night, and it just is creating overtime costs that um, uh, are hard to get to, but we really need their, they're eating up significant dollars that could be used for curricular programs. So we want to try to examine that issue. I do believe the nurse overtime was simply in contact tracing, calling families on cases. I think that will naturally drop at this point. But it had, you know, that that is a place where we might find some savings. So.
Neil, can I just say something?
Sure.
And this is probably more for Katie. Um, this pa- this page should be updated. It's different from what we received. So just for records, point of view.
In your binder?
Yeah, we made, we made some changes there yesterday. Yep.
Mine is the same.
Mine's the same.
No, based on what I printed out. I printed the one.
Oh, it's in here.
I know, but I, I'm just saying for records, because we, so that it'd be up.
I do have some questions, but I don't know if you want me to wait till the end.
Uh, go ahead.
Um, the substitute shortage, I thought a lot of that was due to COVID, and people had a COVID and can't go. So isn't that going to get better?
I don't, I I don't know how anxious, I mean, you rely a lot on retirees. Most of my retirees who are in their sixties who like to to come in and substitute teach are a little bit, not so much up for it as what they thought they, or that they used to be, or that as they're retiring now, like, so I don't know if it will bounce back. Um, with the, with certainly with the retiree population, I worry about it. Um, you know, they're they're more, um, where we were in the pandemic, they were, if they got sick, they were more prone to problems, and they said, it's not worth it for me to come in and and substitute teach with, you know, at the, at the time, let's say, an elementary classroom of all unvaccinated kids, like, at, and and they didn't want to do it. So we'll see. I mean, I hope it, but substitute teaching is also fun. Um, like, when the, when the job market is bad, we have a lot of substitute teachers. Like, if, like, it, when, you know, you can actually follow, like, employment uh, percentages and say, like, when, when people can't get other work, they say, well, until I find my next job, I'm gonna substitute teach. And so it's um, it's a challenge. It's, you know.
So Neil, the, when you say building substitute, is that the same thing as a long-term substitute?
No, a long-term substitute is somebody with skill at the um, uh, you know, they're they're maybe on a maternity leave or a health-related leave, and we have to find a math teacher for three months. And so we have to go find somebody, hopefully a certified teacher. They've put some flexibility in that over the last couple of years, to say that is somebody who's gonna fill it. A a building substitute is a generalist who substitutes wherever they're needed in the building.
And then are our rates comparable to the town?
Yeah. Uh, it's interesting, because other towns had a crisis, there are towns that immediately started this year, just increased it, but we're we're gonna go from a hundred dollars a day to a hundred and thirty. And see, who, like, they just, they had to do it. And um, so I I've got, we collected a lot of that data. The uh, comparable person in South Windsor did a pretty comprehensive survey of the area, and it was, you know, it was very, um, some of our proposals came from the comparison, so I'll just put it that way.
Um, I just wanted to ask, you mentioned um, looking for some dollars coming from non-certified resignations, retirements. So are we looking at parents who retire and not replacing them? I'm just concerned giving our special ed population and what's happening there. It seems like our parents are pretty overworked as well and have large caseloads.
Right, so.
That's reasonable.
Um, we, we were able to do um, some of it last summer. Um, it's, it it depends where the resignation comes. It could depend on move in and then move out some particular kids. So it's, it's sort of a balance that goes on throughout the summer. The the reassignment of um, paraeducators happens in like, early July, and that's when you can start to take a look, are we gonna be able to? So um, I'm not talking about significant cuts there, but we'll take a look at every position.
And and non-certified is is a broader span too, right? You have unaffiliated, you have, you know, other positions. I mean, we always really try to do our due diligence when there's a retirement of saying, hey, is there an opportunity to restructure or not? Involve principals in those conversations and just really take a look. And we just want to reinforce that that process will continue.
Okay, all right. And then you mentioned. And then you mentioned the CED workers and an increase there. I thought that was more covered by the tuition seed collector fees.
Yeah, they're, they're.
They're self-sufficient.
They are probably going to need to.
Look at tuition.
Look at tuition, yeah. Yeah. So just in terms of the themes, you can see here what, what's the themes in terms of enrollment. Elementary, again, it's that goal of 107 classroom positions, which represents flat staffing. The special ed teacher is enrollment-driven. And at Henry James and SHS, I'm calling it flat departmental staffing, meaning, you know, academic departments, same number of teachers. Curriculum enhancements, this is where our special ed theme comes in in terms of mental health supports, social worker and psychologist, a special ed leadership restructuring, the speech and language position we talked about. And then significantly, maybe I should have put it further to the top, but that SHS capstone is so important in terms of moving that school and district priority forward. And then where are we looking at responsible reductions and adjustments? It's, it's in the substitute stuff, the overtime, and looking at any retirements or resignations. So here's the final page. It's a format, hard to read on the screen, but you have it in front of you. I know you're used to this format. Been working very closely in a number of meetings with Mr. Curtis and Ms. Merriweather on this sheet. It's a pleasure to watch the leadership that Ms. Merriweather has shown in holding our superintendent accountable to accurate numbers on this sheet. So that what you could see here is, as we typically do, the impact of the contracts, okay? So you can see the various groups, starting with the teachers, which is not surprisingly, just by their numbers, the most significant dollars-wise. But then unaffiliated, support staff, administrators, tutors, nurses. You see an increase in coaches. That's really an accounting one, I want to point out. It's not like we're getting all sorts of new coaches. This line item probably got underfunded last year. We think it was due to the fact that there were no spring sports the year before, and we kind of didn't have it. So it's really a, it's truing up the accounts, which is, again, thank you to Ms. Merriweather for her insistence on making, on, you know, really making true accounting of this so that you don't get into a budget problem. And then there is some contracts still to be settled. Most significantly, for this spring, we do have to, Personnel Committee, where are you? We do have to have a meeting because our, our custodians are about to enter negotiations. So we'll talk about that. The impact of new positions, this is where we're saying it's six plus some money out of contracted services. The substitute pay upgrade and some social security and Medicare costs going up. So that you can see, those are the adds, and it comes up to about a 4.73% budget increase. So where are the offsets to get that number back down? It starts, the first one is not a number, it's a zero, but we're, and Amy will have a presentation at the workshop around health insurance, but for the first time in a number of years, we believe it's not going to be a significant driver of this budget. So that normally in this budget, this personnel presentation, you'd see the impact of salary dollars. And then another big number about insurance dollars. But our self-insurance fund is in a good place. We're, we're, our reserves, and we are, you know, believing that it will not have an impact. And Amy will be presenting to the, to you at the workshop on that. Some pension OPEB that was a one-time hit last year. Going to need you to explain that one, Amy.
Sure. So last year, we implemented the updated mortality tables, and we also decreased our interest assumption rate down to 6.625. So this had a significant impact on our budget. The mortality tables, I believe, are done once every 20 years, and that is a huge budget hit. So after those have been implemented, we're back down to just decreasing to our target rate, which the Board of Finance wants to get to, that 6.25%. The number in here is not getting to 6.25. It's going from 6.625 to 6.5% in anticipation that next year we'll go to 6.25. The Board of Finance may see it differently, but it was actually cheaper to go to 6.5 than to remain stagnant. So we incorporated that change into this number. So even if we do have to go to 6.25, we'll still have some savings. It just won't be as great. But again, I'll provide more on that during our time at the workshop.
Okay, our longtime board members will know that we always project some savings from certified retirements, knowing that retirements mean you're retiring from the highest salary on the schedule. And we target to hire in the middle of the salary schedule, not all the way at the bottom. And so the average savings is somewhere around $25,000 per position for, we're counting on six of those. We already have three. Three more will come before the end of the year, trust me. And we are anticipating $150,000 worth of savings there. And then you could see the amounts from the grant funding to offset the positions, a use of the non-lapsing, and then the remaining grant funding, really looking at some of these other things that we've talked about with costs related to substitutes and other things to create a significant reduction side that gets the overall impact of this right now, without any of the other stuff we're going to talk about at the workshop, at right around 3%. So I know we did a lot of questions as we went along, but.
I, I have one, Neil.
Sure.
Back to the, I guess, is it the sixth grade that is currently, like, below 300 kids?
Yeah.
And then the impact of that going to Henry teams? I remember you mentioned going from like a 2.8 to a 3 and a 2.6 team structure.
Yeah.
Is that, like, the three teams we have right now for seventh grade, right? Red, blue, and yellow. Is yellow like the .6? Is that the small team, or is it, like, spread? How's that work?
They, it, it can work in a number of ways. There, there are, there is one team, the department supervisors at the middle school. If you're a department supervisor, you teach three, and you have the other portion of your day for your supervisory responsibilities. So a lot of times, they end up on the partial team because it matches their teaching load. I don't know what color they are. I can't help you with that.
But the .6 is the partial team, right?
Yeah, it's a partial team.
Gotcha.
I, I have a few questions, but I don't know if I should just wait till the fifth.
Go ahead.
Ask him now. Okay, well, one was the elementary one. If there's a, if 90, I mean, if I'm reading it right, or I may read wrong, there's 90-plus more people, kids. How are we staying stagnant on the teachers?
So a lot of it is, I, the kindergarten number is going to be important to watch. But because you added a number of positions last summer, those classes where you might have needed to add a teacher, you don't need to anymore. Like, we, we.
Smaller classes right now.
There are smaller classes right now that can absorb more students. And that is part of, almost everyone that was at a tipping point.
Yeah.
Tipped last summer.
So are large grades, like here at Swat, all the large classes?
Yeah.
They're going up to Henry James?
The sixth grade is large and is going, I'm worried about fifth grade going to sixth here. That's one we have to keep an eye on. And we have to keep an eye on, Meg, help me, second grade? Second grade going to third. So we know which grades we have to keep an eye on.
But that, that's the benefit too of.
I think it's first and second.
It's first going to second, thank you. I couldn't, I.
Staffing kindergarten with the projections and then potentially having the flexibility of maybe two FTE or whatever, depending on how it pans out. If we needed to do that, they could potentially float.
Do we have a space here? Because I know that was part of the consideration, the space.
Say it again.
Having classroom space, is that?
Yeah, we have.
Problem for next year.
There could be some inconvenience, yeah. I mean, there's, but we know that there are certain things we can do to, you know, move, move people. You know, you can do mobile music, you know, there are things you could do.
There's space to move.
Yep.
Okay, I have more.
Good, good. I'm here all night.
And maybe this is for when, when we meet on the fifth, but the capstone. I really would be interested in learning more about, because there are juniors who are taking part in it now. And they are, they're ready planning for what they're doing their senior year.
That's correct.
I know that a lot of these are done through the, through the biomed track or any of those tracks. I also know that there's.
Right, they take a capstone course at the end of their content.
There's a lot of stuff that's already happening. And so, like, I'm curious, is what is that number that justifies another full-time position? Unless she's doing, what is she doing, and then what is, why they need a second one?
Yeah, I certainly can put some more detail on it. It's also, so you have some rising seniors that haven't started their capstone. You have juniors that are going to the senior year that have. And now you have some rising juniors that will also enter that area. One of the, I can give you a short snippet now with more detail, but one of the areas that we really want to take a look at is the concept of internships. And building those relationships outside of Simsbury High School, making those work with businesses during the school day, there's a lot of logistics that go into that as well. So again, to Neil's point, we have to see where students are signing up. And we would also like to explore some of those post-secondary programs that kids are passionate about that might be a little less traditional than a two-year or a four-year college, and building up some of those relationships as well. But I can put some finer numbers and some details for you during the workshop.
You know what we can do too? We actually don't have that position on the rationale in the book now, so we can.
Develop that.
Create that with the, with the data for the conversation.
Absolutely.
I'm glad that Jen brought it up because last year it said use existing staff around that position. And I was wondering what was the difference?
The difference is the number of students who now have to meet this requirement.
So this year, students are entering and participating in the capstone, but it doesn't become a requirement until next year's graduating class. So a little more pressure on that actual commitment and the follow-through and execution for those students.
We could put that together, right? The different buckets of where they can take this course and what that may look like.
You may have 100 kids participating now, but next year it probably could go to 400.
Right, that's exactly right.
Right, like, how many actually did it?
I know, sophomore will be participating next year.
But there are a number of programs at Simsbury High School who already will qualify. These current seniors could have had this already.
Oh, without question.
So what, that's what, you know, where it goes.
Yeah.
Yep, understood.
Correct. And then the, but, and what the difference, right? And then the, the language, like, he mentioned it, but does get dropped off. Like, do we have an idea for the ASL on the Chinese? And then?
We do. One, as I think I achieved during curriculum, is to reach out to our neighboring school, the American School for the Deaf. Usually, there are some certified staff members. We actually, we have a, a teacher who is certified as a teacher of, of the deaf. So she is taking one of those sections, but looking to supplement with a second section. So that's for ASL. And for Chinese, I am in discussions right now with neighboring districts who also have Chinese, but not a full compilation needed for one full-time position. So we're reaching out to those districts right now and doing a potential share of staff that are, might be interested in that opportunity.
So it's something that, that Steve mentioned, but isn't something we're really worried about?
I, I think they're challenging to staff, you know.
But we're going to give it a really distinct try.
So.
And then the last thing was the Black and Latino.
Hang on. We did have it, we did have Chinese teachers at the high school. Do we no longer have them?
We have, we used to have between the middle school and the high school two teachers that would address both the middle school and the high school needs. We now have one. And when we decreased to that one position, we added the online opportunity for some of our higher-level Chinese. That relationship has gone just okay. I don't think it's as robust of an experience as it is to have an in-person teacher.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And the last question was the, and what Steve mentioned again, was that Black and Latino studies? Correct me if I'm wrong, but according to my child, there are, that class is already going on. Like, there's a social studies teacher and a Spanish teacher who are co-teaching. Are they not able to continue?
They're doing the Latino studies part of it.
Okay.
For a half a year right now.
That's correct. And there's this other component that's a legislative requirement. So we need to make sure that we are allocating the staff appropriately. But again, we believe that we can use some existing staff in order to meet this need in the course registration. We have to see where students sign up, so that's an elective course.
So while we, we offered it, it's not a requirement that everybody takes it.
Right.
Correct.
Correct, a requirement to offer it. That's correct.
So this is the juggle of course enrollment. We look and then we move within current staffing and the number of sections people are.
But it's, it's successful. I mean, you've got people signing up for it.
Oh, for sure.
So that's the thing, the, the kids are enjoying the course and are, are signing up for it.
That's correct.
Right, but they're both not offered, yeah, right?
I'm sorry, Jim?
But they're both not offered, yeah, only one of them is offered.
No, the Latina Studies course is currently being piloted, as it were. I believe that two teachers came and shared their passion project. That's really what got that off the ground. And now there's an additional legislative requirement to offer the elective. So we have to see how that piece enrolls, what impacts are in staffing. If students are going there, they may not be signing up for other courses, and that's where we might be able to find the staffing efficiencies.
And that's the juggle, is that until you have that, that signed up, how do you know that we won't need more?
Because there's only so many courses that kids could, so it's exactly, so. A kid who might have signed up for the sociology elective now goes and signs up for that elective, and you need less sociology teachers. Like, that's the.
And you work with multi certs and, and, you know.
That's the fun juggle.
Yeah. When is enrollment, or am I getting ahead? I see it's in here, but I didn't know, when is?
When do we sign up for courses?
Yeah, not till.
At the end of this month.
So we won't know that for February 5th?
Usually, we get the first run of the numbers on, like, President's Day weekend.
So are you wondering?
Not for our approved budget, but as we move forward.
We'll know before the 20th.
As budget conversations continue between boards, we've gotten a clearer picture of those things in March, and we've adjusted sometimes later in the process, right?
But if it comes to something that rises to attacking the budget that moves out.
Yes.
Well, no, I know.
No, I know.
Okay.
Excellent.
Anybody else? Well, I have, and maybe I missed it, or maybe it, this is scheduled for the fifth. But I think over $800,000 is coming from grants. And you had talked about how this wasn't going to create a cliff.
I'm so glad you asked. I know, I was waiting so patiently. So there will be something at the workshop for you to review. But yes, I do have a plan to fund the cliff over three years without it having a significant impact on the budget next year.
Nicely done.
Thank you, Amy.
Always prepared. Anybody else have questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always a big piece of the.
Big piece, important piece.
Right back to me, yeah. So this is a catch-up from actually work that the Policy Committee started last year. You'll remember that pre-pandemic, we had a big goal to take one series a year and really dedicate ourselves to the review of it. And then COVID happened, and we fell off the cycle. But last year, we took up the 1,000 series, which is the community series. We Zoom-meeted our way through the series over the course of a number of mornings last year. So what you have in front of you now is we took our existing 1,000 series, reviewed all of those policies, and then we compared the policies we have to Cabe's policies and use kind of the table of contents of Cabe's 1,000 community series and said, are there some that Cabe has that we don't that we could benefit from? So you could see on your exhibit that the ones that we chose to add, we took Cabe's language and made it our own through just some editing and moving around of things we didn't like. And so we had no particular board policy. And so we had no particular board policy about like the Power School parent portal and felt like that was a good addition. Did not have anything in there about news media and what their expectations are if they come to campus, distribution of materials by students, which is something that used to happen more frequently, not so much now. And then we had actually no policy, Cabe had a good one about conduct of the public when you come to one of our events, like what you can and can't do as a good citizen of the town who might be coming to one of our events. And so those were the new policies that were added. And I want to talk about one more that the Policy Committee debated pretty well. And we decided to take a step back on it and do a little bit of a deeper dive. We looked at Cabe had a policy about how do we use robo calls and messaging apps and to contact parents or the community or emergency nature. We started to work with Cabe's policies and realized it wasn't fitting with exactly what we do. So we, Sue Lumke and I met with Maggie Seidel and our new webmaster, Maureen Bellata, Maureen Bellata, a couple of weeks ago. So we want to put together one more policy for the 1000 series around how we're using technology to communicate with parents, but we want to go a little more slow. The rest of this 1000 series was ready. So I talked to Jen as the Policy Chair a week ago and said, let's move the rest of the series forward, and we'll catch up on that policy either later this spring or maybe the fall of next year. So because we just wanted to be more thoughtful about what we were doing. But the rest of the 1000 series is ready. This would be first reading tonight.
Any questions?
No, I like the way it's presented. So it's very clear what we're looking at. Thank you.
All right, so we got you back to our second panel body. Is there anybody who wants to speak?
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from Tino First Road in Simsbury. I just had a couple of comments that I wanted to make about the discussion tonight. And since I'm not on the board, it'll get to ask the questions in the middle. I did read through the policy that was written up earlier, and I may have looked in the wrong place, but there's a reference to tobacco products in that. And I don't know if that was in reference to people visiting campus or whether it was in reference to students and and the tobacco products being forbidden on campus.
It's it's for people visitors. Separate policy about students. This is particularly for visitors to campus.
All right. In that case, I don't necessarily have the same comment. But with regard to that, I wanted to emphasize that anywhere that tobacco products being forbidden relate to students in the policy, that if it doesn't already, as a parent, I would like it to also see the prevention of e cigarette devices and vaping devices. I think that's in the school handbook.
It is.
But I wanted to make sure that that wasn't overlooked. With regard to the the budget
issues that were discussed, I I'm going back, I don't know, I think 16 years, maybe, when we added a fourth vice principal?
Third.
Third vice principal, we added one, like 16 years ago.
Yeah.
And I was actually at that Board of Ed meeting, believe it or not. And at the time, I was wondering, do we need to add this person? Just in terms of adding staff, adding staff. And I noticed that we added at least one full time administrator last for this year. And I don't know how many additions there have been over those 16 years. But the student population is largely similar. And I really appreciated and respected Neil's comment about not creating a cliff. And as you all know, I'm extremely cognizant of mental health issues. I would just ask in a cautionary way that the administration and the board carefully consider and weigh not only what are perceived service needs, but also how much of those perceived needs are truly the domain of the school system versus what services might student families be accessing elsewhere in the community or even in the private sector. I'm not, I'm not saying I know the answer. I'm just saying that I'm asking the board and the administration to really carefully consider, I know we have needs. Are they the school's needs? Or are they somebody else's responsibility?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, the board needs to go into executive session to discuss the student method. So if I could get a moment.
I'll move.
All second.
All is in favor?
Hi.
And we will have our next regular board meeting on Tuesday, the eighth at the Board of Ed conference room. There is a budget workshop, however, on Saturday.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you.